You have set the highest example of volunteerism in our town and in our schools. I know you started on school council, been involved with green teams, many other things, all coming to school committee here at the end where you also served as chair for about two terms. You are a most seasoned member and you are everyone's mentor and friend. You're always poised, approachable, and easy to work with, and that makes you so well-respected by us and the community. We appreciate all you've done and sincerely thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Kate, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. The laughs, the insight, you know, you're just so, like Diane was saying, so approachable since day one, and I knew that you were open to friendship, you know? And so we've become friends and I'm so thankful for that, so I'm gonna miss you.
Not going anywhere. Well, this Thursday night is a big surprise.
I did wanna say one thing. I told her I wasn't gonna cry, so I'm really not. But it was probably fourteen, fifteen years ago that Kate and I, or I sat at my first school committee meeting in the audience, and at the time there were twenty to thirty people, because that was the norm. And I can't get over the change that you stepped into when you were appointed and then elected, and then thrust into the position of chair with about two years as the most senior member. And the change that occurred during that time with nobody in the audience and people watching remotely, and how much you handled the chairmanship and your position on the committee with poise and dedication. Thank you.
No crying, good job. Jen and I have known each other since we had babies.
Right.
Kate and I were talking before the meeting started tonight, and it dawned on me until you mentioned it, that you came onto the school committee right around or just shortly before COVID, so...
No, it was January 2021, so it was the middle of that hybrid year, but mid.
So you've been through a lot of ups and downs on the school committee in the time that you're here with overrides and different building issues and staffing issues, and always a level head and somebody that you could talk to and walk through things with in a conversation to come out the other side with a much better reasoned decision, right? I always appreciate that. Certainly be missed.
Yeah, I can't add much to what was already been said, other than, you know, when we came on, you were our leader, and we had a lot to learn, and you were wonderful. And we are gonna very much miss your voice on this committee, but I'm also very happy for you to regain your other voice.
Get that voice.
Yeah. Thank you, Kate.
You've gone up for this town for years. Always focused on your schools.
I'll find a new role, on the outside.
Citizens queries champ over there.
You know what, I think...
I don't know what it is yet, I'm taking a break.
Yes, yes. I can understand that you need a break, but sometimes you can have more of an impact not on the school committee or select board than you can when you're on them, so...
Trevor Meek asked, said, "Let me know when you run for select board."
Yes, in your packet this evening, holder, is just my report for the last couple of weeks, a couple of things to highlight. The North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, we, this year, we're working in some subcommittees. So we had a subcommittee meeting the other day to look at DESI complaints and just how that whole complaint resolution system works or doesn't work. There's a widespread concern about the current folks in that office in DESI and many times them overstepping their boundaries and making decisions for school districts that aren't in their purview. So we had a good discussion about that, and, you know, we're looking to develop a collective approach with other roundtables throughout the Commonwealth to address those concerns with DESI, so that was last week. Rob and I met with, together, to review, you know, just the operations and maintenance needs. We're continuing to have issues with the boilers. We're trying to get everything squared away before the cold weather really sets in. We had an issue just this morning with one of the boilers at Winthrop not being able to start, so we had a technician out to be able to problem-solve it right away and get it going, and we haven't had any problems since, but that continues. We had a welding repair done on one of the boilers here at the high school today. It'll be re-inspected, I think, Tuesday, and hopefully we can get that closed up and refilled, operational. And Doian has one boiler that we're still trying to figure out what's going on. We had repairs made to it, got it going, it lasted for a couple of days, and then went out again. The, we do have a small leak that we discovered this morning at Doian that was being addressed right away. Then the other, the final piece that we talked about is the front decking of the central office. It's all getting redone, because it's really tough shape. So we had some capital improvement money from last year that was designated for that, so we're taking care of some of those things. They did some emergency repairs today, and Black Friday, they're gonna be in to redo the whole deck, so it doesn't interfere with the work. I had a kickoff meeting for the comprehensive threat assessment training that we're doing for new administrators and counselors. There's two levels to that, so the first level is asynchronous, where I think I have thirteen new people taking it, and it's all around how to conduct threat assessments in schools with students. And so the first level is asynchronous. Once everybody completes that level of training, then there's a live, online, but like a webinar-type situation that all of us will participate in, and it's like three hours long. So that'll be probably in, I'm gonna guess, January for that piece. Ipswich Aware had their monthly meeting, talk about Take Back Day, youth leadership, middle school drop-in program, and talk a little bit about that later, and the opioid abatement funds. Working with staff to manage some personnel changes following Eric's departure. As you know, he's resigned from this position. His last day in the district will be December 5th, and he'll be on vacation during January, but he's still available to us and will still be on payroll. The plan is to have Meg Finnegan, a longtime high school teacher and program manager, assume Eric's role on an interim basis till the end of the year. She's accepting of that position, we've had conversations about that. We also have a plan to backfill her position with another educator here at the high school, also on an interim basis. I'm in the process of working out the contract for that employee as well. Meg's contract will need to be approved, not the contract, Meg's position or appointment is approved by the school committee. So I'll, it was too late to put that on the agenda even as new business tonight, but I'm letting you know this evening that on December 4th is our next meeting, I'll be bringing her name forward to, you know, for the appointment. I walked through that with Nick already. Wellness committee met and discussed the feedback that they've been receiving. We had some good conversations during that meeting. They also then developed a plan to reach out to the Fries groups and school councils to explain the policy and to get some more feedback on how the policy is being implemented and what changes maybe need to be made, or, you know, what helped folks understand what it's all about, so... Those invites actually went out this morning, and I think folks are already responding to it. Tom Gallagher and I met with John Mitchell for, to talk about a high school athletic issue involving all sports. Mutual Concerns met, I'm sure you'll hear a report out about that a little bit later. The admin team meeting, we meet weekly, current and future budget, those are the hot-button topics this year, I think we bring it up every single meeting. We also talked about the RBTs and their use of time on Thursdays, there's some concern about whether they need to be in the faculty meetings or if they should be given additional time for, to do their charting, so that was in a conversation. I would like them to start talking up the building project at the school council meetings and just letting folks know that, you know, there is a school building committee, you know, tune into the meetings, understand what's going on, and just trying to get that word out in the community more. We also talked about issues around gift cards and gifts to the schools, just as a reminder that when gift cards come in, we need to be keeping track of those in the principal's office, so that if in the event somebody comes back and says, "Well, you know, what happened to those gift cards?", we have some record of where they went, so... I'm pleased to announce that we've hired a new nurse at the Winthrop School. Allison Moon will start on December 1st. Allison has been one of our substitute nurses over the last two months. She's very familiar with the Winthrop nurse's office and the Winthrop community. We've had a full-time agency nurse there for the last couple of weeks that who was, I think, doing a great job with the kids. I touched base with her a couple of times and things seemed to be going well, so we're looking forward to having Allison on board and board there. We took care of ordering some new equipment that was much needed, a new medicine cabinet and some other things that were needed, so that's all being put in place now. This week, we are in the midst of one of our onsite reviews with DESI. This one focuses on equal access and civil rights types of information. We submitted documentation over the last month. They were onsite for two days, observing and interviewing and just getting basically the layouts of all the buildings. And then they had interviews with teachers, administrators, and different stakeholders. I had my interview yesterday afternoon. Mid-December, we should have preliminary information back from them, and they did, essentially, they wanna make sure that, like, we don't have timeout rooms anymore, we're not isolating kids, and that students have access to the, you know, the general curriculum and that we have the necessary supports and personnel in place. So I think it went well. The woman that interviewed me was particularly vocal about the engagement level of our students here at the middle and high school, as she walked around and observed different classes and, you know, the interaction between the students and the teachers, so that was good to hear. Yesterday, Tom Markham and I met with the town manager, the finance director, and the accountant to talk about the base budget calculations. The budget subcommittee will be hearing more about this, but we were concerned going in, and we were more concerned coming out, so we're, gotta sharpen our pencils, so I'll leave it at that for now. I've already given the IEA a courtesy heads-up that it was gonna be a particularly difficult budget issue. I had my monthly meeting yesterday with the IEA president, so she's aware. Communications Subcommittee met last night to look at the November newsletter. Today, I had a lunch meeting at Whittier to hear an update on the building project there and the work on the area agreement. They're just getting started on their, on their building committee, they just had their first school building committee meeting last night. And then today, I met with the town manager, the building department, and the planning department to review all of the housing development numbers for MSBA. There's been a number of emails flying around and write-to-no requests for information around building projects in town as it relates to the numbers that I've been submitting to MSBA as part of the population study. And so I just wanted to double-check, because I was being asked questions that I wasn't sure about, and so I met with those folks, and they assured me that the numbers that they had given me in terms of what projects and how many dwelling units were there were reported accurately and correctly, and what it comes down to is there's a, if there's a foundation poured but no building there, it's not real. It doesn't become real until there's an actual building that can be occupied, and then it goes on the rolls. If a planning, any applications haven't been made, it's somebody's dream, they don't even talk about it. So the numbers that I have, I'm confident in, based on my conversations with those folks today, and so, you know, I'll get back to the person who makes the requests and let him know. Matter of fact, he probably already knows tonight, so... And that's it.
I have two comments. I'm getting spicy now that it's my last meeting. So I don't have the details of the budget, well, I'm getting spicier. I don't have the details on the budget, obviously, conversation, and I won't be at the budget subcommittee meeting, but just throwing it out there, if you have any leeway for some pushback, because we, as a district, sort of lost some money that was supposed to come to us last year, and I think that the town should just take that into account before they pay more money for us, is one thing. Second one is, what was the last thing you were just talking about?
Numbers for MSBA?
Yeah, I just wanna caution us all to not spend too many hours in meetings around answering citizens' questions that we already are, if we're confident in our numbers, we're confident in our numbers, and we have the MSBA and we have lots of other professional guidance, and so I have concerns as a soon-to-be citizen of this town by letting a project be guided too much by a local minority of people that may not represent the wider community.
Maybe just for context, I feel like everybody here knows who we're talking about?
Yeah.
There are a group in town, initially formed, funded lobbyists to prevent the school building from going forward. Those requests coming in, you're referring to, and some of the other things we've seen, it costs the town money, the time it takes, the effort that gets put in, both time and hard dollars, and that's just on the information requests. I feel like we sort of skirted around it. It cost us a school building seven, eight years ago, it's gonna cost the town tens of millions of dollars if we move forward. I think we need to be more intentional about calling that out. It's fine that people disagree, some of these things are very costly to the town, to the residents, specifically to the taxpayers, much less everyone's time here that's involved in the school building project.
I didn't mean that we shouldn't listen, and I'm not saying you were either, that we shouldn't listen to the, we want feedback from the community, we want questions, we should absolutely answer any question that comes in. It's just keeping in mind the amount of time and money we spend, and like, once we answer a question, we answer a question.
Totally agree. There's a difference between wanting information and participating in conversation regardless of your perspective or how you want them forward. That's very different than a formal group lobbying against the building project. Now that's what we're saying.
It was roof. Some drips, but we caught it early and they dealt with it. I think it was something to do with the frost that had formed up there. I didn't get a whole lot of information from Rob this morning, he just said that there was a, that there was...
Overlay or the other part?
No, the other part. The part we still need to do, right? Last night, I guess, I'll do it under the reports later.
And liaison reports.
Budget has not met, but just as a follow-up from our last meeting, the budget calendar is posted in the folder for you. I mentioned it last time, there are several budget subcommittee meetings coming up, but there isn't anything back to the full school committee until the beginning of February. We won't provide updates along the way, but you won't see the budget until then. The other thing that we'll talk about more next month, I mentioned before, but is also revising the budget review that we've done, and so we felt like there were several places where we could standardize it, so it was consistent across schools, and other areas where we felt like we could also reduce the effort that gets put into the prep, but also do a better job of bringing that here, so we can focus more on the content questions ahead of time and just make it easier for the admin team, make it easier for us, so we'll talk about that over in that, in upcoming budget subcommittee meetings, and how do we improve on what we've done before.
Finance Committee? Are those the dates that they gave us? Okay.
They are.
Oh, good, perfect, so that, and this is good to go if I share this with... Okay, fantastic.
There was a date for a tri-board meeting, there's a bunch of handful of emails floating around, so I didn't know if that was a final date, so it's reference, but the date isn't clear. January, see, the second, second item down in January is a tri-board meeting. Wasn't sure if the date that was out there is the seventh.
That's, yeah.
That's...
Everybody should have everybody's report.
I can certainly add the seventh, and that's, but other than that, that's the only thing that isn't known as of right now.
Also in your folder is the draft of the November newsletter, lighter this month. The two main topics that are in there, first, both of them are consistent monthly topics, so first, update on the elementary school building project, just kind of two informational highlights, but mostly also providing reference information for people to be able to go and get details or attend or listen in on an upcoming meeting. And then continuing our monthly safety update, so this one on bullying and cyber security, cyber bullying and cyberbullying awareness, excuse me. The normal, here's what you can look for as a parent member of the family, a little bit of how you could bring it up with your student, and then link for additional information, including the incident reporting form for the districts, including that link here to reinforce what Brian's been sending out in his superintendent newsletters, and then our normal activities and accomplishments and upcoming district events, and there's some placeholders there, so we'll round up, we'll round up some of the, some of what we covered tonight.
That's gonna go out Tuesday.
I apologize, I did not make the meeting last night. I just thought of this now, I don't know if the committee has thought about if you wanna advertise an open position on the school committee, this could be a good avenue for that, or do you wanna wait, it's up to you, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you for bringing it up here, 'cause we wanna make sure we're talking about it here. There's a little bit of logistics of like, when and how you can apply, which isn't ready for us to post yet.
Yep.
Applications will be in December, I think, interviews and reviews going on in January, so we're not ready for it here. We'll make sure we're talking about it here, I think, select board can reinforce.
I can reach out to the newspaper too about...
Okay.
We wanna make sure people know about it and we're publicizing, we're just not ready to say what, how to reach out if you're interested.
Mutual concerns.
Yes, we met on Monday. It was great, we had three things on the agenda for discussion, payroll, wellness, the wellness policy, and vaping prevention. And with payroll, there were some issues with the first few paychecks that were received by the teachers, and so obviously that was concerning to them, and, but through some back and forth, they, there's now systems in place, and hopefully that's in the past, but that was, you know, for the first couple of months, and that's, you know, such an important part of, you know, your job is to get your paycheck nava correct. So the wellness policy, one thing that we discussed was having a, the teacher, having a teacher on the wellness policy, because then they can talk about what that means. So for instance, that the sentence, "Celebrations held in classrooms will not involve food", so, okay, but what does that mean to the teacher? What are the things that they do in that classroom that now they can't do? Whether it's, one example was a cafe reading, you know, where they would, they would have hot chocolate and something, and make it very special, like a little nook, like a reading nook, and that's, they can't do that, you know, things like that, so just to have a teacher presence on the wellness policy, so they can just inform, be part of the discussion, say, "Well, then this will have to go, what can we do, what are the other options?" For celebrations, maybe there's a list of things that are okay to be brought in for a celebration, that can be sent to parents, you know? So just trying to find, this is our first, like, this is what it is, and, but we can talk about it and see what works for them also, to keep the kids excited. Let's see. Oh, the other concern was the lunches, and if that, and Brian, Dr. Blake did say, "Yes, everything is according to the wellness policy", but they, you know, they said they couldn't find fruit. This was at the high school. The high school, was it, what did the other, what are the other foods that they were mentioning?
Rice Krispie treats?
And, you know, all these things that... Rice Krispie treats and, you know, all these things that, you know, you see and you're like, can't be part of the wellness policy. But as, uh, Dr. Blake was explaining, these things are not just your average Joe's pizza or your average Joe's, whatever. These are part of the wellness, um, they fall under the wellness policy. Correct? Is that correct?
They're, they fall under the guidelines.
Guidelines. Guidelines. That's.
They're engineered. I mean, don't get me started. They're especially engineered so schools will buy the products because they fall under the guidelines.
Okay. So anyway, that was a concern of the teachers, just to go down, not see any fruit. The last conversation we had, which was brought by the school committee to them, was vaping prevention. And what, what is it like at the schools dealing with this? You know, and there's a lot of, who's gonna take their time to monitor? Who's gonna, you know, um, uh, principal is constantly having to do that. And it's just hard to get people, they have other things that they're doing. They're doing the, working with the students, helping the students. So now they have to go monitor, you know, stand outside the bathrooms, you know? So it's, it's just a discussion that we're just gonna have to keep bringing up. And a question was, what are the other districts doing? Is there a way that we can, because we don't, all don't need to reinvent the wheel. Is there a department that, is there a district somewhere that's doing well? What is that? So how can we reach out? So this is the question here. How can we reach out to them? Maybe, um, Dr. Blake, when you have your meetings with your superintendents, does this come up vaping? And what ideas people are.
Yes, and we're all in the same boat.
I know.
We're all in the same boat.
All right. So well, I'll keep thinking it. I just want to keep that conversation going with them to hear what, so anyway, it was great. It was a great meeting. The next time we're meeting is, I think, the 13th of January. That's what was on here. And, um, I want to come up with an agenda item from us to them to add to that, um, add to that meeting when it's time.
I love that. I was on that committee my first year maybe, and it was great, but I feel like it was very much they would bring stuff to us. I think it's awesome that like, we hear a lot about vaping here so that, you know, there's that two-way dialogue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess again, if we think of anything, we could send it to you. Okay. Are you the chair?
Yes.
I don't know how that happened. I really wanted it.
Yeah. We instantly pointed fingers. I mean, to be clear too, on the wellness policy, my understanding is that teachers were always welcome to be part of it. They just didn't. And now we're really encouraging them. And now that it's part of their daily routine, and they've seen it in action to really encourage them to be part of it. I think that's, they weren't excluded. I want to make sure that's not.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah.
They were never excluded.
And you were also gonna try to recruit.
Well, recruitment of teachers, I had that conversation with, with Alicia Thomas yesterday in our meeting. And I want to also recruit some other parents.
I think you mentioned a teacher from each, each building would be helpful, or at least an elementary representative and then. Oh, the TWIG grant committee met yesterday. And, um, I mean, so grants were approved. They, the requested amount was thirty-five thousand, approximately thirty-five thousand dollars more than the available funds. But, um, the committee, after thoughtful deliberation, we funded everything that was appropriate and we could. And I don't think, I think I can say that I don't think the committee felt like they were leaving any innovation. Out. I think they did a good job of analyzing. However, there was a lot of, um, conversation about the need to relook at the application rubric and similar to the way the pain grant, um, policy was reviewed. This is my second year on TWIG, I believe, and we keep running into, well, what's needed and what's innovated, innovative? Because the Traverso Weatherall Grant is supposed to be the innovative grant. And it's not always innovative, but that innovative, but it doesn't mean it's not needed. So, um, I think we're gonna look at what we can do to make it more clear on how to grant the money.
And Matt.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sensing that we probably need to reconstitute the working groups around both pain and now TWIG. Just because there's a few sort of action items that were left kind of undone. And our fearless leader from last year did a wonderful job. I guess I'll take that upon myself to schedule, you know, for now, but.
Well, I think when we left it, like, we, I don't know how urgent, like I hear you, but like, I think we wanted to see how the first year of pain was gonna go. And then if we did wait for that, we could start it next September and say, okay, this worked for pain the way we restructured things. Let's apply it to TWIG. Unless it's like.
So this coming year, I think pain grants are due in March, right? And then voted on by the committee in May. So that's the first year they're going through with the new policy. So I think there, there was a little bit of frustrations, like, can you get this done by our spring TWIG grants? Because TWIG happens twice a year. There was a lot of, um, questions around, there's great things going on, but how many times can we grant the money to one event or one, one grant? And could it be something that happens before April? Is that, I think April is the next session.
Well, I think the lingering conversation around pain too is the thing we've kind of been dancing around is, is the carve-out element that we have never really kind of put our, sunk our teeth into. And that's gonna be a complex conversation, I think, so. Get that started. I don't know if that carries over into TWIG as well or not, but I've, I've, I've never actually looked at the TWIG to see how many repetitive twigs we're looking at.
There's not, there's not too many that are repetitive in the TWIG grants. I think the one that had been a TWIG grant is now a, a pain grant, and that's the YMCA. That was, that was put forth in years past as two separate grants under the, the TWIG grants. Now I think it's the, I think it's just one pain grant that they write.
Because of the, um, cap at seventy-five hundred for a TWIG grant, there doesn't seem to be like a carve-out potential there is for a pain grant.
Sounds more like tightening up the rubric or the language around, the definitions around what qualifies and.
Right.
Like what's, what should be in the budget versus what should be funded through this maybe?
Right. It's just hard. Um, so in the very first question of the rubric, it asks, what, um, does the grant provide supplemental enrichment programs and/or educational enhancement? But then it never mentions enrichment again in the rubric. And it ties things into DESI and state standards. So, um.
And the FUFFY policy, which we did, which applies to TWIG and pain, we defined enrichment.
That's what I was just about to pull up. Yeah.
I do feel like TWIG has gotten a short shift though. I think we feel like, let's just get, you know, pain sorted out.
If I'm saying, I don't know how hard it would be.
Yeah.
It might, it would be a much lighter lift, I think, than the pain was.
Well, that's why I was wondering, hoping it would be a lighter lift and potentially.
Is the definition to enrichment. I think all we did with the pain grant was we took away these questions and we literally like copied and pasted the definitions or something like that. I have to look at it, but it's just, you don't have to go digging, but like, if you're like, what the heck does enrichment mean? Here, but we could put it there.
Is that something we can do before the spring?
Sure.
Okay.
Get it working. That would be helpful.
Something like a heavy lift, but we probably wouldn't want to meet Suter rather than later, but.
We can have, we can have, uh, you know, citizen participation maybe.
Ex officio.
Two meetings. Wrap it up in two meetings.
Two meetings.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, the school building committee met, um, last night or night, no, night before. I don't know. They're all running together. We met this week. Um, and we spent time, I, I went, uh, item by item and reviewed all of the, uh, MSBA submission information to date. So I walked through everything from the initial compliance certification that we had to sign off on. Uh, I walked through the enrollment reports that had been done by DESI that we submitted as part of the enrollment information. The, uh, school, um, comprehensive report that was done a number of years ago on the, on the entire district. The original, uh, the, the first ed, um, I forget what the name of it is now. The, um, the educational outline for the elementary school. And it asked about the types of rooms that we have, how many of each, what we were proposing, et cetera. So I walked through each document and we spent particular time on, on the enrollment documents. And that was, I think, what generated some of the questions. Because a lot of it is, and, and I think what, what I've found so far is a lot of this information that, that MSBA is requesting from us. They're putting it into a formula, so a lot of the popular, a lot of the fields are, are even coming to us already pre-populated. And they just want us to, to check and make sure that they're, they're correct because it's information that they've pulled from DESI in a lot of cases around enrollment data. And then some of the historical data for housing starts, et cetera. They're pulling from the US Census data and, and information that the, the town has to report to the state on a month-by-month basis. So I walked through all of that and, um, answered a bunch of questions that folks had around some of that information. And, uh, so once we got through that, we talked about next steps. Saying to them, we, we sort of did things a little bit in, not in, in order. So we had like six steps in this, what they call eligibility period. Well, we did one, two, three, four, and six. And so we've got to go back now and finish the in-between. And the only time, the reason that we did the last step was usually when, when we're doing these, this eligibility period, the last step would be your vote for the funding for the, for the feasibility study. But because of our timeline, our timeline ends before our next town meeting. So we had to do, we had to get the permission, the votes and everything done in this fall town meeting. So now we have to go back and backfill. So what's left for us to do is the, um, MSBA is taking a look at all the enrollment data that we've submitted, all the housing starts, all the construction information. Once they finish their evaluation of that, they'll be contacting me to set up a meeting with, with some of the school building committee folks to review that data, answer any questions that they have. And then that piece will be done. And then the other piece that, um, Tom and, uh, Rob Furtado and I would be working on is the capital and maintenance plan for, for the district. And that's another online document that we have to, we have to, uh, fill out and, and submit. So once those pieces are done, then we'll be able to hopefully be in, they'll, we'll have satisfied the requirements for the eligibility period and we'll be invited into feasibility. Once we get that okay, then we can look at hiring an OPM and moving the, that whole process forward.
Well, I have a climate resiliency question. So I'm, um, have been the liaison to the climate resiliency committee. I'm happy to, I was thinking about asking them if I could continue on that committee at least for this school year as a citizen member. And then perhaps you guys wouldn't need to appoint someone to fulfill that for the year. I wouldn't be the school committee liaison necessarily, but I could still email you if anything happens and you can talk about it at your meetings. But I just felt like maybe you had a lot on your plate with the school building committee and the budget and stuff, so. I'm happy to do that. I'm sure they would be fine. Up for that. I can ask. And we were supposed to meet this week, but they didn't post the agenda in time, so I don't know when we're meeting, but in the next couple of weeks. So I might go and just see if they'll have me as a citizen. If anyone really wants to be on climate resiliency committee.
That's a great plan.
It's like once a month. It's not a heavy lift.
Zach with your high school, um, student rep report.
Look, um, I guess what's kind of become the theme is pretty good. Um, it's not a bad theme, I guess, but, um, we had a trip to Essex Tech today for AP environmental class, where our two classes, we did a presentation on the salt marsh and a study we do. So it was pretty good. It's with the Massato bottom, a bunch of schools around here. We have, uh, yeah, um, we have senior privilege now. Um, that's helpful. I like that. Everybody likes that, so it's good. Uh, mostly doing college applications, stuff like that. We have the football Thanksgiving game. That'll come up soon. That'll be good. The R-block issue, that seems like it's been pretty much revol, like resolved at this point, I think. So that's good. Uh, winter sports. Um, and then the last thing is, part of the thing is that if I don't have many bad things to come and say, I mean, obviously you don't want to have bad things, but I think it might be beneficial to do a survey to send out, um, just to see if there is. And so I just wanted to get all of your input on, if there's any like, I know you'd mentioned something about the vaping with like, I think, like, just see if it, the vape detectors are effective.
Yeah, just to see, to see how the students are feeling about going to, going into the bathrooms, going, you know, what's the overall feeling? Has it changed?
It's more of a climate survey of.
Yeah.
How people are feeling about safety of the bathrooms or not.
Yeah, just, no, it, the intimidation.
That's, that's what you mean. I don't know if there were any maybe other questions or areas anybody might wonder about.
You had talked about food.
The food, yep. I have that on there. Yeah, I, I have like a, it's more of a concept of an idea right now, but, um, extracurriculars, food, the academics, facilities. I wasn't sure if there's any other areas. I mean, I want to do, keep it brief because most students, if they see a long survey, myself included, nope, I'll pass on that. So.
When you say survey.
Can't use donuts now either.
Yeah. Oh, I know.
When you say survey, do you, are you saying you're just gonna kind of ask for, like, what are your thoughts on this? Because you actually might get good feedback. It might.
Yeah, no, I imagine, I imagine we would get good feedback, maybe almost like, maybe statements with agree, strongly agree, that sort of thing. Or, I mean, I think we'll, you'll have some people feel strongly either way. So probably also a section for comments. And then I've gotten pretty good at using AI, not for class work, of course, but.
Tool to post a survey?
It's, well, it's very good at taking in a lot of data and it can find trends and stuff, so I'd probably use that. You could have open-ended questions. I found it's very helpful. So, yeah, I wasn't sure if there are any specific questions you might want on there or.
To keep it brief and to, um, really open it up to see what people are thinking. If you're asking about specific things, you're sort of gonna get responses there. So you might overly hear about vaping. I think you're gonna hear about that anyway. What I would suggest is just ask, ask two questions. Ask what's something that's going really well that you really like? What's something that's not going well that you would improve? And I would just keep it at those two questions. To your point, you're gonna get, you'll see all the trends people bring up. Food, ton, in either positive or negative. And so I would just keep it really simple like that.
You can just do like two questions.
Really two questions. What's going really well? What would you improve? And just leave it at that. I think you're gonna get a ton of information. I think you actually get better because it's so broad as opposed to some of the leading questions that we might be able, we could certainly provide. I would keep it simple like that.
Yeah, that's probably, it's a good idea.
Take someone fifteen seconds to fill out. That's what you're looking for.
You'll get a lot of false answers though, because Charlie, Charlie did that a lot and he, Charlie came in and I think he got a lot of like, more donuts, more, you know, like a lot of like joke answers. Which is fine.
AI would be able to sort that out.
But then you get some, and assuming it's anonymous, obviously, right?
I'd assume, yeah.
Should be anonymous, I think, because then you'll get more.
More donuts is not a serious response, is what you're saying. Already's donut land would have a problem.
So other than that, I guess not much else.
About the survey, I don't know if you'll have like a little descriptor, but like. About the survey, I don't know if you'll have like a little descriptor, but like if, if you're, you know, prefacing it that you're looking for answers because of your role as the school, you know, as your representation on the school committee, like, I don't, you obviously can't force people to do this, but like we kind of hear district level situations. So, like it's, I don't know how, you'll have to filter that out too, if people are like, I, you know, have a problem with a specific class. Like that's kind of certainly good information, but that would probably go to your student council versus, you know, so you might actually, I don't know, maybe you'll want all that information and bring it just to the different places where it lands.
I mean, I'm on the school council too and the student vibes, so I should be able to.
Perfect.
But filter it out anyway and that should work well, I think.
Perfect. Well, that's great. I think that's a great idea.
The only thing I would, I would mention, this isn't, this isn't a meeting with the finance, you know, reports. That's, that's the be, the, the beginning of the month. I would say just in support of what Dr. Blake said, we are actively engaged with administrators in preparing for the FY twenty-seven budget. So, that has been, that has been a, a, a big part of the work. We're also in the middle of three large ah, ah, procurements that I think we should let the committee know about. One, and it relates to the earlier topic about necessary repairs to, to the Doian roof. We, we have, we have what's called an invitation for bid that's out on the street now. Proposals are due back to us next Wednesday. And we've actually got quite a bit. I was looking at the, at the pre-bid material earlier today. And we have received inquiries from about eleven potential bidders. So, we'll see Wednesday what, what we actually get in, in for bids. So, that will be, so we will receive those bids Wednesday and hopefully we, we will award them within, before the day's over. So, that will be, that will be an, an important piece. The next thing that we will have out to bid before the month of December, before the calendar year is over, is our school bus contract. And we've talked about that as part of the budget process, because that's obviously a, one of the large drivers of that. The contract itself and rates expire June thirtieth of this year. So, to open the new school year, we need to go to the, to the street and get bids. So, that's a competitive, competitive process. We'll be out before the end of the calendar year. And we should have information back in hand by the beginning of February, certainly in time to present results to both the, the subcommittee and then at the February meeting for the full committee. So, we don't know where that's going to land, although we can probably, we probably should spend some time talking about school bus transportation. Dr. Blake and I have been actively engaged in lots of that for the last few, few months. So, that's something to, to, just to put out there, so, so the committee's aware. And, and the third thing that we're working on and, is, which will do probably the, right after the beginning of the year, is the, is for the OPM. We'll need, once we get the next couple of steps behind us from the MSBA, we'll need to, to go to the street for that. So, that will be at the beginning of the year. But those are the three large procurements that we have going on, you know, right now.
Been any update or discussion, sorry, has there been any update or discussion about the electric school bus grant we got from, is that part of it or no?
Well, it will be, it will be a part of it. But the answer to your question is no. We haven't had any new information in, in, in months. The EPA, the last time we did get information, which was over the summer from Rick Mitchell, who was the climate, climate resiliency manager for the town. You know, there was some, there was concerns over, over the summer about, you know, what funding levels that the EPA may continue to receive from the, from the administration and where that may, where that may lie. There has been nothing definitive about money being withheld. In fact, it's really been just the opposite. That, it will continue. But it will need to be part of, part of the, the, ah, the bid that we put on the street for transportation will need to include expectations around, around electrifying buses.
Great. Item, vote to appoint warrant signatory.
So, Kate has been the signatory on all of the warrants. This was voted a number of years ago, to have one person review the warrant, be available, sign off on, on the warrants. And so, it's all done electronically. So, with Kate stepping down, we need to appoint someone else to be that signatory. Essentially, what happens is there's an email that comes out with the attached document, is it DocuSign?
It's a, it's a DocuSign work, right?
You review the warrant and sign off on it and just keep the process moving.
Well, it, it is, it is about once a week. And they will be alternating, the one week the warrant is the payroll warrant and the alternating weeks is the non-payroll or the, or the, or the rest of the, the rest of the bills. So, it's about once a week, sometimes twice a week, depends on, on how active, you know, our billing, billing may be. But it's all done, as Brian said, it's all done like, you know, electronically. Kate can certainly speak to it. You've been a terrific help in keeping it growing.
Yeah, actually, and the folks in central, central office are great because they will usually text me and say, I just sent you a. Because I'm not on my school committee email all day long because I have a job, so. So, they just text me when I get, and sometimes I can do it right away and sometimes I can't do it for a few hours. And I think you had said, maybe at budget subcommittee when we talked about this, it's the payroll one that's pretty timely. Like you really want to get that done that day or within a few hours, but the other ones, I mean, I always try to get it done in the same day. It takes, doesn't take long. I keep looking at you because now we sort of talked about potential.
I would imagine certainly at, at the beginning, I think we, we did this, you and I, that there's, there's a ramp-up period to, to get you to appreciate what you're looking at, right? There's a, and then, then it probably becomes a little more, you know, common. But certainly, any, any questions that there may be, just, just ask. We'll.
Yeah, sometimes I just shoot Tom an email and say this. Answer.
That would be my main question. What exactly are you reviewing?
Bills. Immunos reports that are bills essentially. Batches of bills that we pay for special education services, miscellaneous items, stuff teachers buy and reimburse for. And I mean, it's all kinds of stuff, but it's like you're, you're signing batches of things, so five or six signatures, automatic signatures. But then you sort of are scrolling through the bills. And Tom's already signed them for the most part by the time you get them, so. So, I can sit down with somebody and.
And for payroll, like what do you review? It just feels like a huge responsibility.
Yeah, you can talk offline, or you and Tom could sit down either way.
I mean, it is, it is, it is timely. I mean, you know, both, both elements are timely because we're up against a deadline for, from a town hall. But that doesn't mean that therefore if there are concerns or questions that we won't take the time and, and methodically go, I, I'll go through them. By the time something gets to the school committee member, it has been, it has been vetted by, by whoever the purchaser was, meaning the principal or the department head. It's been vetted by my team members to make sure the purchase order has been open against it, make sure there's enough funds encumbered to pay the bill. And then, and then I have to go through them all and, and do, and then sign off each of the, you know, on each of the batches. In, in, in one, in one DocuSign, you know, document, as Kate said, there may be six or seven batches. Yeah, and that's going to be, one batch will be special education, one batch will be facilities, one batch will be, will, will be food service. But so, we batch things by the type of purchase. And some of them are very commonplace. That's why, you know, at the beginning you may be looking, oh, what did we spend at Fantini's Bakery this, this month on? And we did food service today just before I came. That's how I have them off the top of my head. But, so it's, it, it, it'll, it'll get fairly, fairly, ah, 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 routine. The, the payroll ones are pretty much all contractual. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of, you know, negotiating. I mean, you know, people are paid what their, their contractual rate is, whether they're a, 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 a union member or a non-union member. If someone's an hourly employee and, you know, that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
It is a timely task, but it's not, it's not a heavy lift. It's all done on your laptop or even your phone, frankly.
Be willing to take it on.
Do you need a backup for it?
It certainly couldn't hurt. I think, I think the, the purpose of the backup probably goes back to the days prior to the electronic receipt. Back, back when someone needed to actually come in and sign.
They already send to the office once a week.
Yeah, that, that, that used to be the process, but we've now, us and the town have done everything electronically.
To show you how it's evolved, my first year or two on the school commi, on the school committee. My first year or two here, I used to come, I used to come with a shopping bag every week. And it was a big pile of, of the, the manifest and all the bills, what he's describing, but it was all paper. And the school committee would review it and have to sign off physically. We, I think we had to get three or four signatures from the whole committee. I would put them all back in the bag and take them back to work the next day. So, the fact that it's a couple of hours batched electronically is. Completely different world.
Okay, so to answer your question, Jenny, I guess we could.
It certainly couldn't hurt. I mean, it maybe, you know, maybe Jen is, is, is on vacation and it's not readily available or out of, you know, without wifi. So, it's, it's certainly a good idea.
So, I'm hearing Jen's interested in.
It'd be two separate motions.
Move to appoint Jen Donahue as the warrant signatory for the school committee.
Second by Jenny. Further discussion? Roll call vote, so Jenny?
Yes. Yes. Thank you, I thank.
Uh, move to appoint Jenny Connolly as the warrant, as the. Ward, alternate warrant signatory for the Ipswich School Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? I'm going to go the other way, just give you a break.
Oh. Yes.
Yes, okay. Passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Next up, I'm going to make this one brief. We were going to review our goals and then the draft superintendent goals, but I understand that operations is not able to meet. So, I did want to just give the opportunity if anybody wanted to share anything, maybe if you're not on operations, hopeful. Welcome meeting before our next meeting. Ask Dick.
Got it.
That'd be great. But my, my hope would be that there was like a couple just. Boarding things with our goals that were going to be like tightened up, so if that can happen and then. Present something there, I can go through a round and then I can come here at our next meeting.
I wonder with the comments that are in there, I don't even know that we need a meeting for that. I thought the takeaway from last time was Haley was just going to incorporate those changes.
Based with her because they are incorporated. And she wasn't here at that last meeting, so I'm not sure. So, you might need a meeting.
I'll check with her if it's just as easy an update. Otherwise, I'll, I'll get a meeting scheduled. Okay?
I, I just want to add, it kind of reminded me when you were talking about this DESI review that you have and they were focusing on equal access and civil rights types of information. I think in the goals, there's like stuff that's like wanting just a report out on that, so that, my understanding is an example of that. So, I know what it was kind of like, what does this mean? What is an example? That would be, in my mind, a great example. And then I had emailed Dr. Blake a couple ideas and I've said them, I said them at our summer, I think I've said them before, but I'd like to see on superintendent goals, so parity with our goals, but also talk about the field trip situation.
Talked about that last week.
Yeah, so that would be great if that could happen here. And then implementation of sustainability policy, wellness policy and the athletic policy when it's completed. If there's anything else for those who aren't on operations, or maybe if you are on operations, you just want to get a head start, but like email Dr. Blake directly. Okay, new business. Move that the Ipswich School Committee accept the meeting minutes from November sixth twenty-five. Move that the Ipswich School Committee accept with gratitude the donation of one thousand five hundred dollars from institution. Savings charitable foundation for the robotics team at Ipswich High School. Funds to be deposited into the high school gift account for exclusive use of the robotics team. Move that the Ipswich School Committee accept with gratitude the donation of one thousand dollars from Jay Leonard Stone Walls and Landscaping. Robotics team at Ipswich High School. Robotics team. Move that the Ipswich School Committee accept with gratitude the donation of one thousand dollars from Atlantic Design. Engineering projects racing challenge at Ipswich High School. Funds to be deposited into the high school gift account with exclusive use of the racing challenge program. Move that the Ipswich School Committee accept with gratitude the donation of five hundred dollars from Zeno's Roast Beef Incorporated for the engineering projects racing challenge at Ipswich High School. Funds to be deposited into the high school gift. Challenge program.
Moved.
Second.
By Matt, second by Sasha. Further discussion? All in favor? Passes.
Move to a chair.
Second. Oh, I shouldn't have let her do that. I'm sorry.
It's almost fitting that it was the second.